Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Well, this is going to be a fun one. Welcome to the 2018 Santa Clarita City Council Candidates Forum, brought to you by the Signal newspaper, SCVTV, and KHTS AM 1220. My name is Tim White. I'm the editor of The Signal, and I'll be serving as the moderator tonight. And on behalf of Signal publisher Richard Budman, SCVTV, and KHTS, we welcome 13 of the 15 candidates who are competing for three seats on the city council in the November 6th election. As they arrive tonight, the candidates participated in a random draw for their seating positions, so there's no hinky ding, you know, no hijinks going on there. And that also determines the order in which they'll answer the questions. Seat number one, we'll start with question one, and then seat number two will be the first answer, question two, and so on. Let's introduce the candidates before we get started. Big smiles, everyone. Starting from the left, we have Sandra Nichols. Next to Sandra, we have Bill Miranda, and his fellow incumbent Marcia McLean, and Diane Troutman, and Sankalb Pharma, then Tim Ben Boydston, then Jason Gibbs, Matthew Hargit, Brett Haddock, Ken Dean, Shawn Weber, Logan Smith, and Lorraine West. I had a nightmare about missing one of them, and I'd be accused of all sorts of bias. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about how the format's going to work tonight. We're going to have several questions that will be addressed to all of the candidates, but we wanted to try to avoid a little bit of repetition, so they're each also going to get a couple of questions that only they will answer. Those questions will be drawn at random by our questioners from each of the three media sponsors. Due to the large number of candidates, we're not going to have rebuttals during the Q&amp;A portion of the forum, but our candidates will get a two-minute closing statement at the end, so if they want to do rebuttals or anything like that, they can work that into their rebuttal at the end. We'll announce the time limits for each question as we go, and we will be keeping time, and we have a bell that will indicate when a candidate's time up. And when they, if they keep talking too long past that, the bell will get a little more insistent. There we go. So let's see. Blah, 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 the rules, blah, blah, blah. Questionnaire candidates tonight. We have journalists from each of the three media sponsors for the forum. Representing The Signal is our own City Hall reporter Tammy Murgah. Representing SCVTV is Patricia Silva. And representing KHTS is Caleb Lynetta. All right. So with that, we're going to get started. Our first question is for all of the candidates, and you'll each have 30 seconds to answer, okay? And we'll look to Tammy Murgah from The Signal to get the ball rolling.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tammy, like they mentioned earlier. I do want to apologize in advance, I'm a little bit sick, but I'll do my best to be loud and clear. And the first question for Ms. Nichols is, identify one item you would change on the city's budget. Would you spend more, less, or eliminate it altogether, and why?
Well, I guess one of the things is, I think that the roads, I mean, there are other things that can be done that don't cost a lot of money instead of building roads to eliminate the traffic problems here. For example, they can encourage people to take the city bus. They say the bus census is down, and they've got several reasons, according to The Signal, but you should encourage people to take it, to carpool from their house, their neighborhoods, to the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. 30 seconds goes fast, huh? Okay, up next is Bill Miranda.
Repeat the question if you'd like. Again, the question is, identify one item you would change on the city's budget. Would you spend more, less, or eliminate it altogether, and why?
I would spend more money on deputies. I would spend more money on traffic safety. We've just spent more money by adding some deputies and motorcycle police force to cut out on speeding, but there's a lot of other things we need to do from a deputy standpoint. We're opening a new sheriff station, and we can afford more deputies right now. And the city continues to grow, and public safety is the number-one concern that everyone on this, on this panel should, should be involved with.
Thank you, Bill. Up next is Marcia McLean.
The question once again, identify one item, one line item you would change on the city's budget. Would you spend more, less, or eliminate it altogether, and why?
Well, our budget is made up of many, many different facets. We spend the most money on law enforcement, then parks and rec, and then we go on down the line, spending money on arts and parks and rec programs and different things. So when you say, try to pick out just one item, it's really not that easy to do. I would like to spend more money on the arts. We just increased our sheriff's budget, so we are spending more on deputies and public safety programs, but I think the arts maybe would be one thing where we might be able to improve upon it.
Thank you, Marcia. Up next is Diane Troutman.
The question once again, identify one line item you would change on the city's budget. Would you spend more, less, or eliminate it altogether, and why?
Well, I think we have some competing items. One is transportation, the other is housing, but if we want to get a handle on traffic congestion, we're going to have to shift funding to mass transit, because we can't build enough roads to build our way out of congestion, and we need to improve mass transit for everyone, including seniors and students. That'll be a combination of funds coming in, but I think we need to shift funds from our budget to help with that, too. We need to invest in mass transit the way we invest in roads. There has to be a balance.
Thank you, Diane. Up next is Sankalb Pharma.
I was brought up under the impression that it takes money to make money, and I would, if there's an area I would cut on a, on a line budget, it could be transportation and use that money for healthcare and education. I think that's where I would use that, that's where I would focus the budget on.
Thank you. Answering next is Tim Ben Boydston.
We need more roads, and we need them very badly. Traffic is bad, and it's getting worse. We need to first do a peak hour traffic study to find out where the traffic is the worst and at what time it's the worst. Not with traffic averaging what we have now in our general plan, but peak hour traffic. We need to find out where those problems are, we need to address them, we need to build roads, we need to spend that money, looking at the planning, where those roads are going, get the land, start designing them, doing the EIRs, use that money to build more roads. The traffic is horrible.
Thank you. And Jason Gibbs.
Making sure everybody's awake.
That didn't, did that mirror you?
Tim, are you doing that? I'm going to try this again. So I would look to add more funds to establish the Public Safety Commission. I want us to-
The mic is too loud.
Yeah, well, I want us to start taking a real proactive approach to public safety issues in Santa Clarita, be it traffic issues, be it the open issues, be it the homeless issues. All of these can be attacked with a proactive response using the Public Safety Commission. We shouldn't just blindly throw money at various resources until we identify how they will benefit this community.
I don't need a mic.
I would say, I would say spend more money on arts, after-school programs, parks and recreation, a little more into the traffic systems that we already have, our traffic control center and such.
Am I going to have the same entrance? No, okay, we're good. I, I think we need to upgrade all of the intersections in town to tie into the traffic control center. We have an underutilized multimillion-dollar traffic control center at the third floor of City Hall, and only about 300 of our several thousand local intersections are tied into it. The system's fully capable of dynamically routing congestion when it builds up in town, and it's just not being utilized. Right now, we have about three different timers for the traffic. It covers it from morning, noon, and night, and it, that's, that doesn't work for, when the traffic starts building up. And the system can tie into things like Google Maps and Waze, and we need to spend money there.
Thank you.
I took the opportunity some years ago of studying our proposed budget, and I found something in there that I found very interesting that kind of rattled me, and it was in the multi-thousands of dollars, and it was line item 101 or 106, or whatever it was, but it was magazines for every department in the thousands, and thought like $60,000, $70,000. I'd like to see that eliminated from the, from our proposed budget, and that money going toward mass transportation or traffic and congestion.
Thanks, Ken. Hey, we got it. Up next is Shawn Weber.
You know, if we're going to do a traffic study, we should be planning for a population of close to a half million. Our current city council loves to develop and loves to build and build and build and build, and then we're talking about roads, but we're building roads to alleviate a current problem, and then we're going to have more. I mean, I think it's how we're allocating the funds and maybe reducing our budget rather than, you know, just allocating funds differently.
You asked about line item, budget item, so let's talk about something that hasn't been discussed much so far, numbers. I agree with some of what's been said about public transit and public safety, but let's talk about arts funding. We spend about four cents a resident on the arts, whereas cities with comparable budgets like Pasadena spend $1.11. I'd like to see a minimum of a $50,000 annual increase in arts grant funding for community-selected projects in public spaces in the city.
My highest priority is keeping you safe, and to keep you safe, we have to keep pace with ever-increasing the sheriff's budget, and that means giving them the revenue to keep our kids safe from drugs, which is a crisis in this valley. We do not have enough roads. We need to build the road infrastructure, and we're going to have to knuckle down and find a way to get that funding. We did that somewhat today in working with Secretary Chow, received $47 million for the I-5 improvements that will help, and it will also help eventually with the old road.
Thank you, everyone. Stayed on time, that was nice. Sorry about the little technical glitch, but I think we've got that nailed down. I can hear myself, anyway. So we're going to go to one more question for everybody to answer, and we're going to start with Bill Miranda this time, and asking this question on behalf of SCVTV is Patricia Silva. Patricia, take it away.
Hi, candidates, good evening. Many kids who grew up in Santa Clarita can't afford to live here once they are out on their own. What will you do to bring more affordable housing to Santa Clarita?
Standby.
I raised my kids here in Santa Clarita. They're grown up, they have jobs, they have college degrees, and they can't afford to come back and live here where they grew up. And so I'm determined to change that. But how do we change that? You talk about affordable housing, I, I think in terms of workforce housing. How do we change that? We change that by creating more housing, right? In spite of what everybody says about more housing causes all kinds of problems, Santa Clarita has a way of making their developers, right, create infrastructure with every housing development that it builds. And so as long as we do good housing with good infrastructure, there you go. That'll work.
Thank you, Bill. Marcia McLean.
I think there's absolutely nothing worse than a senior who is outpriced for their, their apartments, and they become homeless, or working families. There's nothing worse. The way to alleviate that problem is supply and demand. When you have enough of something, the rents will go down, the prices go down. So if you try to stop all development, that doesn't work. Supply and demand, good, quality, affordable workforce homes for those seniors and for those who want to continue to live here. Thank you.
Nice finish. Diane Troutman.
Well, we need to look at a variety of solutions. We need to talk to developers about doing starter homes. We need to encourage development of affordable units that are mixed in with market rate, and we can do that with various methods. I'm working on a process to do shared housing for seniors, and hopefully that will expand to something that will help students, that will help, you know, mothers with children who need to share a home. I think we need to get creative about this, but just building is not going to be enough, because we can't build them fast enough to make them affordable.
Thank you, Diane. Sankalb Pharma.
I've given, I've talked to a lot of millennials, and I've spoken to them, and they need to figure out their hustle and what their hustle is. They have every opportunity in their backyard when it comes to work. I believe there's a very strong possibility to have vocational education and get good-paying jobs here in Santa Clarita, where they can start with a condo and work their way up to... It's not just here, it's throughout LA, but at least here, you can get a house with a yard.
Thank you, Sankalb. Tim Ben Boydston.
More affordable housing. You have to have more houses. Supply and demand, it's very simple. I'm old enough to remember when they were bulldozing apartments outside of Atlanta, Georgia, and not old, rundown apartments, just medium apartments that were a few years old, because they didn't have enough people to fill them. So if you want to make it affordable or bring the price down, you have to build more of it, more entry-level multifamily dwellings. Put very carefully so that you don't overburden the road structure, and that is critical. And also to talk to the state and try to get them to back off on some of all of the very expensive fees that they make us put on every single house.
Thank you, Tim Ben. Jason Gibbs.
I do agree with what's been said about supply and demand, but the supply is coming. We have a lot of huge developments that are underway, not the least of which New Hall Ranch was just talking 21,000 homes. I see the homes coming, but we need to see the business infrastructure that's going to supply the jobs for people to pay for these homes. I am one of those millennials that Mr. Boydston talked about, or San Clar talked about, excuse me, that, that is raising two little kids in Santa Clarita, and it is taking two of us working full-time to be able to afford a home in this valley.
Thank you, Jason. Matthew Hargit.
All right. As far as senior housing, I think that's simple. Subsidizing, creating more buildings for our older population to live in, that's a simple one. As far as the younger population, fortunately for the short term, there's nothing we can do to just drastically drop the price and keep some younger people living in this valley. It's going to take a combination of creating better, high-paying jobs and more long-term housing over, like New Hall Ranch project, to bring those prices down over time.
Thank you. Matthew? Brett Haddock. Do I get his leftover time?
It's not Congress, you can't yield your time to anybody. California has a housing shortage to the tune of about 500,000 units per year, and we need desperately to build more houses. We need more housing for seniors. My parents are threatening to park a trailer in my front yard so that they can downsize, because they've got too much house. And we need starter homes, we need mixed-use redevelopment areas where we've got walkable cities, and it's near mass transit, so some of the younger kids, they're wanting a higher density. We don't want big sky rises, but we want medium-density stuff.
Thank you, Brett. Ken Dean.
Very simple, affordable housing, rent control. Eliminate the homelessness. I have an article, I'm glad they asked this question, that I took out of the LA Times from Friday, September 21st, and it states, "In LA downtown, there's an organ, a development called Circa. A one-bedroom apartment starts at $3,050 a month. Apartments in Santa Clarita, for one bedroom, $1,600 a month, to $3,000 for a two-bedroom apartment." This is ludicrous.
Thank you, Ken. Shawn Weber.
So let me get this straight. The solution to our kids not being able to afford a house is to build more houses, rather than creating jobs like building a solar plant, setting up something like a Greek theater out here, something that creates jobs rather than a bunch of small businesses. I mean, do you know that somebody working at most of these small businesses out here, they can't afford a home, so where is the income going to come from? Building more homes, right? That's the solution. Great.
As has been said before, supply and demand dictates that if you build more houses, the price of housing will drop, but what you build matters. And 30,000 market-rate luxury homes aren't doing anything for the potentially hundreds of estimated homeless students in the city of Santa Clarita. We need to build multifamily dwellings, we need to build it near public transit, so that transit is accessible to the families coming into our valley, and the families already here, and we can reduce the congestion and the impact on our roads that we're going to see when those 30,000 homes come into this valley. We also need to work on things like cost controls. With any luck, we'll repeal, we'll pass Prop 10 in November and repeal the Cost to Hawkins Act, which will add a new tool to our toolbox for dealing with rising housing costs.
Thank you, Logan. Mayor Lorraine West.
We need a balanced approach to housing. Keep the quality. Santa Clarita is a high-quality community intermix within new development, affordable housing, so that we're not creating just mass areas of housing that is supposedly moderate, but within quality communities. And we do need to build near-transit centers. It's very critical for us. That is the way with the future across America, and we do and are bringing more jobs, working with the EDC.
Thank you, Lorraine. It's kind of like a fantasy football draft. When you go first, your next pick doesn't come around until way at the end of the second round. Sandra Nichols.
Well, you know, I've been looking into other cities, and they're talking about affordable housing, like Seattle for working people. They have a developer that has built an apartment complex, it's got eight apartments. These people own these apartments, but they have a community kitchen, and those people... One thing, the millennials are losing any kind of community. Everybody is just on their phones and their games all the time. So I think that we need to be more creative for our housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, so here's where we're going to change it up a little bit. Each candidate now is going to get one question that they will answer, and it'll be the only one answering it. We're going to draw them at random. The first to field one of these will be Marcia McLean, and to kick that off, we're going to go to Caleb Lynetta from KHTS. So reach into your bag and pull one out.
The KHTS International Bag of Mystery is what we're calling it tonight. So...
Why is it moving on its own?
And is this, is this the 30-second one?
This is, this is, pardon?
Is this... How long do we get to answer this?
You get a minute. Oh, yeah, that's right. Each candidate will get a minute to answer their own question.
Okay.
And we'll draw a new question for Diane, and then so on down the line. Okay.
With the rash of fires that we've had in our valley, what are your ideas for improving emergency preparedness?
Oh, gosh. Okay, so number one is the support of our, our fire department and our first responders. Also, what has happened recently is there is no clear-cutting in the forest, so there is tons and tons of undergrowth, just ready to burn, burn, burn. So what we do already is, we do support our, our county and our state with the firefighting services. We need to 100% continue to do that. Our first responders are amazing here in Santa Clarita. We need to continue to make sure that we support them so that they know that they are supported, and, you know, stopping forest fires, you could stop arsonists, for one. That would be a good thing to do. We have people going around setting fires that are killing people and burning their homes and whole neighborhoods. That is something that cannot be tolerated. So hopefully, we can get the word out, and if you see someone with a match that you know shouldn't be there, make sure that you report that person immediately, whether or not there's a fire at that moment.
Thank you, Marcia. And we're going to come back to Tammy now, and Tammy's going to pull one out of the big red signal tin from the Signal's holiday party in 1995. And answering this question will be Diane Troutman.
All right, Ms. Troutman, your question is, if you received a generous grant, on which city need would you spend it?
I would spend it on housing. I would spend it on working with developers and creating optional housing. Maybe we could do some subsidizing. I would try to acquire some property that we could do that on and put some more money into it. There is a possibility of something like an ad valorem tax credit that we might be able to offer to help build affordable housing. So I would look at various ways that we could increase housing and to help seniors stabilize them in the existing housing, because we go through a period where that, that housing is subsidized, and then it falls out of that, so we need to make sure that we're keeping people in the homes they're in. And I would help people with, more with repairs and things like that on their homes, and encourage additional dwelling units. The city of Los Angeles has done a pilot program where they're offering a subsidy to encourage those units to be built.
Thank you, Diane. And we're going to move on to Patricia, drawing a question out of the SCVTV jar of mystery.
That's right.
And answering this question will be Sankalb Pharma.
All right, let's see. Ever since the city was formed in 1987, Santa Clarita has been annexing new neighborhoods approved by the county. With New Hall Ranch and possibly Northlake coming online, is now the time for the Santa Clarita Valley to become one city. Why, or why not?
I think it is time for Santa Clarita to become one city. I think with the five councils who have done an amazing job, and that's why we're all here, to support this community, but I think things can be on a fast track when you have a mayor instead of five or four other council members. I think by having one person, the community can reach out to that one person, not get lost in other individuals on who to contact. With one person, you know, the buck stops with that person. You can, you know, I'll have an open door. If anyone in the community or has any questions, then I would be responsible for those questions and making those concerns.
Thank you, Sankalb. Going to Caleb Lynetta from KHTS, asking Tim Ben Boydston a question.
All right, back to the bag of mystery. Mr. Boydston, city, the city has done a terrific job with parks and open space, but is there anything you would do to improve this further?
We will always add parkland as needed. In fact, if you look the national average, we're still a little bit below what we are supposed to be for parkland. We've done a great job with open space, and I'm proud to say that I served on the committee, the original committee, before we actually passed open space, and then I got appointed by surprise to the city council, so then I had to go off that committee, but I was able to work then to bring about open space while I was on. So we're very proud of the fact that we have that open space. The one thing we haven't done with that open space is we have not used some of it, and we can use 10% of that open space for active parkland, and that should be done. We should be doing things like building, things that the people will use, like a BMX track, something that's not terribly expensive, but something that can be in the open space, continues to be in open space, but brings in tourism, and it's open space that's utilized, it's active parkland, and we have the ability to do that under law, and we should. So I, I'm finished, thank you.
That was perfect. Almost like we blocked it out that way. Jason Gibbs will now field a question from Tammy at The Signal.
All right, Mr. Gibbs, your question is, what is Santa Clarita's greatest achievement and its greatest shortcoming?
I think the greatest shortcoming at this point is going to be how we, how we react to things. When we talk about the homelessness issue, we waited until it looked like it was becoming a real problem, and then we created an ad hoc to react to the issue. I'm very much proponent, as I said earlier, for proactive solutions to things. Greatest strength, honestly, it is the community. It is the community as a whole. It's not just City Hall. City Hall is one little piece, but the nonprofits, the people in the city that I've gotten to meet during the city council adventure, as I call it, are incredible. They are giving, they are the reason, they're the reason that Santa Clarita is heralded by so many as a great place to be and a great place to raise your kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Now Matthew Hargit will field a question from Patricia from SCVTV.
All right, your question is, the time will come when some number of people will be mad at you about a decision you make. Describe a situation where people were upset with you and how you worked through it.
See, the problem, easiest would have to be is, for a short time in my company, I took over the job assignments for our, one of our special event locations, and we have about 20 guys that work onsite there. So it's, it's a baseball stadium, so some guys get put in a place where they get to enjoy the show, some guys get stuck in a back corner. What you end up having to do is just sit down, talk to some of the guys that are unhappy, you know, explain to them that not everybody gets a chance to have a happy day, but we're all there to really- there to really just work hard and focus on that. And their time for a good time will come around.
Thank you, Matthew. Up next is Brett Haddock, fielding a question from Caleb at KHTS.
She's a pass.
Mr. Haddock, how can the city work faster to clean up the Whittaker-Bermite toxic spill? And would you support creating another thoroughfare in Santa Clarita connecting Golden Valley and Villa Princessa?
The, I think we should have, we kind of missed the train on that a bit. We should have prioritized the areas that should have been cleaned up so that we can put a road through first. Right now, we're waiting for the entire property to be cleaned up before we do any development with it, before we do any road development. So we really should have prioritized that. Right now, they're kind of on the tail end of most of the cleanup. The ongoing project is going to be the next 40, 50 years, just cleaning all of the water out of there. And that's not something that could really be sped up with the current technology that we've got. As for the road, I absolutely need a road through there. I know it's long been planned. We've got the bridge that, for Villa Princessa, that's eventually going to go through to Wiley Canyon on one end, Golden Valley, and then connect to the other Villa Princessa. And we should have been on that from the start, but we, we need to start breaking ground on that right now and not wait for a developer to pay for it.
Thank you, Brett. Ken Dean will now field a question from Tammy.
All right, Mr. Dean, your question is, should Santa Clarita switch its council elections to be decided and represented by districts rather than at large seats? Why or why not?
I don't like that question. Give me another one. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Please ask me that again.
Sure.
My humor got in the way.
No worries. Should Santa Clarita switch its council elections to be decided and represented by districts rather than at large seats? Why or why not?
I do believe that we should have voting districts. Every city around us, Burbank, Glendale, Los Angeles, they all have districts. I think it would be more effective if we had representatives that would be living in the area and the district and representing not only that district, but obviously all the districts. But I do, I really feel that we need, we've come to this time, we're a big city now, we're not a small city. We're the third-largest city in Los Angeles County. It's time to get down to brass tacks and have term limits and districts.
Thank you, Ken. Up next is Sean Weber, fielding a question from SCVTV's Patricia.
Your question is, we've all seen large-scale residential and commercial development projects delayed by litigation and economic fluctuations for 10 or 15 years or more. You could approve a project tomorrow, and it might not start construction until you're long gone from the city council. How do you see your responsibility to the future?
I wouldn't fast-track my campaign contributors. You know, that's the biggest issue right now, is our, the people financing our city council campaigns are the ones that are having preference. And then there's litigation, because people don't want that.
Thank you, Sean. Up next, Logan Smith, fielding a question from Caleb.
All right, Mr. Smith, what's your, what's your vision to alleviate some of the congestion on the roads in our valley?
Absolutely. Great question. Anybody that drives a car in Santa Clarita knows the extent of the traffic problem that we deal with in the city. And if you commute to LA or anywhere else, you know just how bad that gets. With 30,000 homes on the way, we're looking at as many as 20,000 to 30,000 to 50,000, maybe 60,000 more cars on the road every day. And I don't know about you, but that's not something I want to deal with. Step one, we need to bring good mortgage-paying jobs to the Santa Clarita Valley, and I have a day-one plan to do that by enrolling Santa Clarita in the Los Angeles County, Los Angeles County Clean Power Alliance, like they did up in Richmond, California. They just opened a 10.5-megawatt SolarOne facility, 250 good mortgage-paying jobs that you can never outsource, you can never ship overseas, and those are jobs you don't have to drive down to Woodland Hills or Calabasas or Hollywood or anywhere else for. On top of that, we need to look at free or subsidized ridership on the buses for students, seniors, disabled individuals, and veterans. And we need to make sure that we're making transit, mass public transit, accessible to the people that need that most. By doing that, we can create opportunities for the low-income members of our community. One in 10 Santa Clarita residents live in poverty, and we need to do our part to make sure they have access to the same opportunities the rest of us do.
Thank you, Logan. Up next, Lorraine West will field a question from Tammy.
The question is, the Whittaker-Bermite site is the hole in the donut for Santa Clarita. Once the site has environment clearance for development, what should go there?
The Whittaker-Bermite site has been a contaminated site that started in 1918. It is not cleared yet, even from unexploded ordinance, and it is under the jurisdiction of the State of California Department of Toxic Substance Control. I think we'd all like to see something wonderful there, and the water cleanup will go on throughout and past our lifetime. Most important thing to remember about the Whittaker-Bermite site is, in the final analysis, the state, when DTSC certifies it clean, will give us a letter certifying that it is clean as to what they know about, and whatever else is found later is on us.
Thank you, Lorraine. Sandra Nichols will now field a question from Patricia.
All right, your question is, sales and use taxes generated inside the city pay for city services. What would you say to convince a company to locate inside the city instead of in the unincorporated county area?
Well, I haven't really thought about this, but we do need higher-paying jobs, and I guess that we need to give them some more incentive. Can you ask me that question again?
Yes. Sales and use taxes generated inside the city pay for city services. What would you say to convince a company to locate inside the city instead of in the unincorporated county area?
Right there, I mean, we can tell, we will obviously convince them that they need, that we need to give them more incentives to put businesses in this community, and tell them about this, where the sales taxes go providing to their business. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. And last for this round will be Bill Miranda, answering a question from Caleb.
Councilmember Miranda, with school shootings around the country, a drug epidemic here in Santa Clarita, and an apparent increase in suicides, what steps should the city be taking to address these challenges?
Well, there's several steps. Number one, more deputies, and I talked about that before. Number two, you have to have an educational program that's very strong and reaches the kids at an early age, right? That's very important. You have to reach them at an early age. You have to reinforce it. For instance, you reach them in grammar school, you reinforce it over junior high school and then through high school. All right, so more police, but also more education, right? So "just say no" might have worked a little bit during the 80s, but now you have to do a lot more than "just say no." You have to educate these people. We, as council members and wannabe council members, need to get out into the community and be, and be proponents for the equivalent of "just say no." Keep kids off drugs. The other thing, there, and I've heard this from, from other forums that we've been in, talking about putting, you know, cannabis centers throughout the community. I'm totally against that, right? And I don't think we should have them. I think our kids have enough challenges as it is without having to walk past cannabis stores on their way to school.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we're now going to move on to a question that everybody will answer. We're going to start with Diane Troutman, and I believe it's KHTS, right? Yeah.
Ms. Troutman, hi. The build-out for Santa Clarita over the next 15 years will result in a population of 450,000, which will increase by, today's number, by 150,000. How should the city manage that kind of growth?
Well, we have to be much more aggressive about tackling a whole number of issues. We have to work on transportation. We need to talk to the county and find out what they're doing, what they're proposing, what they can do to help alleviate the projects that are now going in to make sure that we have the proper infrastructure. And anything else that's built, we should have more of a say in it, and I think we need to develop that relationship with the county to go in that direction. We also need to make sure that we have the water resources, because a lot of this is predicated on having the resources available. So we need to make sure that we have them. Otherwise, we need to take caution.
Thank you. Sankal Parma?
With the influx of people coming in here, traffic is already bad. I face it every single day. There's an opportunity to create a monorail system here, something that will reduce traffic, reduce carbon footprint, and as the temperature increases, get people moving from Canyon Country to New Hall, to Santa Clarita, to Magic Mountain, even up to Castaic. There's a dried-up riverbed. Now, we can preserve that, but we can use that path to do something big.
Thank you. Tim Ben Boydston?
Yes, I think we need to look at the general plan to make sure that we actually want 450 or 500,000 people to be here, to make sure that we actually have the traffic, a plan in place. Without doing a peak-hour traffic study, without looking at the roads, and without looking at where the problems are, we should be reassessing that. And we need to do that the next time we do the general plan. We also need to ask ourselves, do we have enough water? And the answer is, apparently, in the last drought, there wasn't enough water, because they made us all use less. And so people are wondering, why is it that we can continue to build housing when we don't have enough water? So it's, we're going to have to address that.
Thank you. Jason Gibbs?
So the key is going to be infrastructure within the city. The two big things I look at is the Portobello Plan for Whittaker-Bermite. With the build-out getting ready to happen there and the cleanup getting done, I would like that plan pulled out of the filing cabinet and revisited. It's been 20 years. I think there may be a change that can be, can be taken, so that we're not just building a bunch more houses. We can look at increasing the economic infrastructure that's going to be needed to support the 400,000 people that we're going to see here down the road. And of course, with that, the roads, we have to get Santa Clarita Parkway, we have to get the cross-valley connectors done. Otherwise, traffic is just going to be a nightmare for years to come.
Thank you. Matthew Hargit?
Infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. We're going to, we're going to have to build out roads that we didn't even know that we had to build out. We're going to have to increase apartment complexes. We're going to have to increase basically everything that we have in this town, double down if you're going to have 450,000 people. But I think what we really need to do is revisit the plans and see if we can really fit and hold that many people in this valley. It's already a nightmare with traffic with everything else. I think we need to look at reducing that a bit.
Thank you. Brett Haddock?
We need to make sure that we are a self-sustaining city. Anytime, you know, I think 75% of our population is currently driving over the hill to a job. We need to make sure that we have the jobs here so that you don't have to go over the hill for, for it. We're also seeing a decentralization of retail services, and we need more mixed-use retail and residential areas so that people don't have to get in their car and drive across town to get what they need. And if they just need something quick and it's not able to be delivered, they can just walk downstairs or across the street to get it.
Thank you. Ken Dean?
We all know from past experience that the County of Los Angeles is going to do what the County of Los Angeles is going to do. And if it's development, they're going to do it. One of the things we have to look into is our water. Is it available? The general plan states that Santa Clarita Parkway, Golden Valley Parkway, Magic Martin Parkway, and Villa Princessa all cross the 996 Whittaker-Bermite property. We ought to look into the Bermite property and see exactly where our roads could go and start working on them, because, and start preparing for this influx of all this traffic and all the people that are going to be moving in.
Thank you, Ken. Sean Weber?
My family moved us out here because they didn't want to live in the valley. They didn't want us to grow up in the valley, particularly Silmar. And if you notice how long it takes for response for crime, and, you know, if you call the police and you say something happened, unless it's like someone's getting killed, it's going to take a while. And in regards to the water, I don't know if this is true, and maybe our city council can, can confirm this, but from what I understand, the San Canyon Plaza developer was forced to give up his land because they're going to be developing or dropping gray water after the 14 freeway. I wonder what that's going to do with Bermite.
Thank you. Logan Smith?
Build-out places at, I think, 485,000, actually. That's nearly half a million people. So our priority needs to be mitigating the impact of that population growth on the people who already live and work in this community. That means dealing with water reclamation, increasing purple pipe projects, especially to the eastern end of the valley, to make sure we're making the most of our existing water reclamation facility and mitigating the impact the increased population has on water in our community. That means upzoning near public transit for multi-unit development to, again, decrease urban sprawl that destroys our green space, destroys the habitat of endangered species, and consolidates us near public transit to mitigate the impact on the people who live here.
Thank you, Logan. Lorraine West?
Thank you. The county will grow. The city doesn't have very much land within it, like the county does. We need to stick to the plan. Ovi ovi is a good, solid plan with the city and the county. We need to keep jobs-housing balance, bring the jobs. We do need to build near the transit centers. It's critical. That is the wave across the nation, and we do need to build the road network, and that would include getting Villa Princessa across Whittaker-Bermite to Wiley, connecting Canyon Country, clean across from the 14 to 5.
Thank you, Lorraine. Sandra Nichols?
Well, I think the city has, is going to have to really think before they access a new development, as they do all the time, if you read the Signal or any other kind of media outlet. We need, of course, more traffic. I don't think that we need, that we can sustain that many people. So I think we need to just put our efforts on jobs, good jobs here, and the housing that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Bill Miranda?
I think we have to create more and more jobs, and we're doing that, all right? We're bringing in more and more companies, creating more jobs, and having more places where we can create those jobs. Right now, we're, we're looking at Needham Ranch, that's building out over there by Eternal Valley Cemetery. That's that place, when it's fully, fully built out, it's going to have 3,000 to 5,000 new jobs. And that's going to help commuters living in Santa Clarita not have to go over any hills just to get to Needham Ranch. And so that's just one of the many things we're doing.
Thank you, Bill. Marcia McLean?
Those figures come, I'm involved in regional organization, Southern California Association of Governments, and the state and, and that organization sets the numbers. Those numbers, it's called RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. They're arbitrary numbers. There's no reason why we need to build this number or have that, our population increase that high if we don't want it to. So if we're strong and we say we cannot facilitate that number of people, we don't need to.
Thank you, Marcia. Now, in the interest of time, we're, we're starting with Sankal Parma on this round. We're still going to do the individual questions, but I'm calling an audible. Because of where we are on time, we're going to go 30-second answers on these. So think fast, talk fast. Sound good? We want to try to get through this round as quickly as we can. And I believe Tammy's up.
All right, the question is, the city has placed a great deal of emphasis on arts, entertainment, and special events. If you could add a new event and delete an existing one, what would they be?
I would add science. I think the arts are important. I think entertainment's important. Both of those are in our backyard, and there's a lot of gifted, talented artists out there, and a lot of talent out there as well. But I think one area I would increase is science.
Thank you. Tim Ben Boydston?
Sorry, wrangling the paper. All right, your question is, what should the city be doing to cultivate the next generation of civic leaders?
I think that this, what the city could do to cultivate the next generation of civic leaders would be to make the City of Santa Clarita into districts, so that people that are running for city council, when they're younger, actually think they have a chance to actually be on the city council, because the city council members have been there a very long time, and I think it's time for new blood. So I think that could be the number-one thing they could do.
Thank you. Jason Gibbs, answering a question from Caleb Lynetta. Thank you. Jason Gibbs, answering a question from Caleb Lametta.
Hi, Mr. Gibbs. What is your position on the CEMEX mining operations here in Santa Clarita? And what would you suggest the city do if CEMEX wishes to drag the city into a lengthy, expensive legal battle?
So I think CEMEX is one of those true nonpartisan issues. I think just about everybody in this room would agree, we don't want it here. And the city has been fighting it for decades, and we should continue to do so. I know right now, we're waiting for a ruling coming down from the BLM on what's going on with their contracts. All we can do for the moment is stay vigilant, stay on top of it, and when they're comfortable with it, we just keep fighting.
Thank you. Up next, Tammy will ask a question of Matthew Hargit.
The question is, are there any constituencies, interests, or groups that you feel are underserved by the city, and what changes should be made?
I'd say young people. That's a mix of not feeling like anybody wants to take them seriously, and also them not wanting to participate. Because when you're younger, you know, a lot of things motivate you. Politics tends to be boring to some people. But really reaching out there and trying to make people feel like they should have a voice, and they should come out as a young person and participate in the process.
Thank you. Up next is Brett Haddock. Can I have a good one?
They're all good.
Yeah, they're all good, right? All right. Well, your hopefully good question is, the New Hall Land and Farming Company planned out Valencia. The City of Santa Clarita has kick-started the revitalization of Old Town New Hall. In what ways would you specifically help Canyon Country?
Well, as a resident of Canyon Country, I've spent most of my life there. I think that a lot of us feel awfully ignored. And we're starting to see a little bit more attention over there with the new community center that's being built. But by and large, I think we need to focus more on Canyon Country. And I think the best way to do that is to implement districts so that we can have someone that could actually reach out and interact with all of the residents of their district. And so that way, no part of town feels ignored.
Thank you, Brett. Ken Dean, fielding a question from Caleb.
Mr. Dean, how do you think the City of Santa Clarita should handle the new marijuana laws?
Personally, I'm against it 100%. I don't like the idea of it. Right now, if a person is stopped for reckless driving, and they can give a breath test from the police, the sheriff, there is, far as I know, there's nothing to detect marijuana on a person and their erratic behavior that may come about in this. So it's something I would vote definitely against. I cannot, I don't want to see it in my city or anything even close to it.
Thank you. Sean Weber, answering a question from the Signal.
Your question is, what is your opinion on the city's approach to homelessness? What would you change if elected?
Well, there's a lot of cities that are implementing a program where the homeless are encouraged to work, where they get benefits if they work and they do stuff for the city. I would do those kinds of things. I would look into those kinds of programs.
Thank you. Logan Smith, answering a question from SCVTV.
Your question is, Santa Clarita has stopped a lot of development on its borders by purchasing tax-defalted property and saving it as permanent open space parkland. Should the city step up that effort?
Absolutely. One point I will concede to my opponents is that they've done a great job of open space preservation, especially acquisition near the CEMEX project. That's something I would like to expand, especially as it borders the rim of the Valley project in the San Gabriel Mountains. It's important to me that we take advantage and preserve the open space that we have. And we can use that, frankly, as a weapon to oppose disastrous and dangerous environmental developments in our community.
Thank you. Lorraine West, answering a question from KHTS.
Getting to the bottom of the bag here. Let's see. Mayor West, what do you agree with in terms of SCV's current water policy, and what do you disagree with? What would you do to change it?
Well, I think we need to continue to work to bring more of the California water, project water here, expanding open space and keeping our environment clean and recharging our groundwater. We get 50% of our water from the Santa Clara River. And I just want to make sure that we aren't polluting our own water by allowing chemicals and contaminants to get into our groundwater supply. Because if we do that, we will affect all future generations. So I would like to be stronger on keeping the river clean.
Thank you. Sandra Nichols, fielding a question from the Signal.
Your question is, what is your position on rent control, considering Proposition 10 on the November ballot?
Well, that's really complicated. And you watch those things on TV, you have no idea. But what I read in the Signal today, I'm not for rent control. I've seen other places that have gone downhill because they've had rent control. I'm talking the cities. There needs to be something to help people keep affordable housing, especially seniors, because rent keeps going up. The state has, the landlords, as long as they give a 30-day notice, can keep raising the rent. And that's exactly what they're doing. So we need to help the seniors.
Thank you. Bill Miranda, answering a question from SCVTV.
Your question is, half of our city's working population commutes out of our valley every day. There is only room for so many more lanes on the 5 and 14 freeways. What is your long-term solution?
Well, there is more room for more lanes. We're building, we just had a $47 million grant that's going to help us build another HOV lane. It's going to help us build more truck lanes over what is considered the choke spot of the 5. So there's plenty of room for it. We're doing it. We just got $47 million to help us do it. We're a city, all right? We're not, you know, a state or a county, and we can't control all the expenses that it's going to take to build those kinds of roads and to expand them. But we're involved on a regional plan to get that done. And so we're working on that right now.
Thank you, Bill. Diane Troutman, this is the last, oh, Marcia, 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 I checked you off. I'm sorry. See, there I go, I'm biased. Marcia answering a question from Caleb.
I didn't forget about you. So, we estimate that 14,000 military veterans live in the valley. Currently, about 500 are attending COC, but there are still thousands that are having trouble re-acclimating to civilian life. How should the city identify and motivate this population?
I'm really glad you asked that. Our veterans are the most important people that we need to make sure that we take care of. We just are building right now 78 homes of a veteran complex where the veterans have services. Their families and their veterans have the services that they need within this complex. And it was the first one in the country. We need to continue that type of building for our veterans and taking care of our veterans. We must never, ever forget what they've done for our country.
Thank you, Marcia. Side note, Marcia directed me in a play when I was 20 years old. We had a good time. This is the last random question of the night for Diane Troutman.
Your question is, there are 15 candidates in the election for three seats. Should measures be taken to reduce the field of candidates? And if so, what would those changes be?
I'm not sure about reducing the number of candidates. I think that we should move to districts, to council districts, and then you would let the people in those districts determine who they are going to support. And it would be easier to do that because you wouldn't have the tremendous cost associated with at-large campaigns. Right now, we're talking about $15,000 for one mailer for at-large in this city, and most people can't afford that. So I think that we should do districts and let it roll the way it will.
All right. Thank you very much. We're not going to waste any time. We're going to go right into the closing statements. Two minutes each. You're welcome to finish early if you want. Tim Ben Boydston's going to kick us off.
I would like to thank the Signal, SCVTV, and KHTS for hosting this. I would like to thank everyone here for showing up because you care that much about democracy. I've lived here a long time. My wife, who's a schoolteacher locally, for about, longer than we've been together, which is about 27 years. And I have to tell you, my family moved here when I was a little boy because we, my family, was looking for a place that was a nicer and a better place to live than over the hill in the San Fernando Valley. And there are some nice places down there, but there are some not-nice places down there. And over the years, people are always moving here for that reason, from someplace else. So my question to each and every person that's listening or watching, do you feel like this is a better place than when you were here a few years ago when you got here? And I think we're going in the wrong direction. Because we're not a little city anymore. We're a big city, and we need to grow up, and we need to do the representation for our citizens. And we need to be able to stand up and look at that general plan and say, is this the right direction? And have the courage to change it, to not have our lives managed by a few people that have been doing it for years and years and years. This is Santa Clarita, and we need a new direction. And for that, we need a new city council. And I am that person. And I ask you for your vote. Please, get out and vote, and let's make Santa Clarita a wonderful place and keep it a wonderful place. So thank you for all coming.
Thank you, Tim Ben. Jason Gibbs?
I'd like to echo Tim's, thank you again to the Signal, SCVTV, and KHTS for the forum thank you tonight. Make no mistake about it, Santa Clarita is a beautiful place. My wife and I moved here in 2012 when she started working for Boston Scientific, and we knew that we had found someplace special that was truly family-centric, that was dedicated to bringing young families here and raising your family here and having opportunity. The three things that I think Santa Clarita has done well historically has been public safety, has been financial choices and economic development. But growing up in Santa Barbara and taking my college years at San Luis Obispo, I saw cities that were family-centric, that were great places to be, that are no longer. The affordability's gone, the availability's gone. There's no opportunity anymore for young families. And I see that starting to creep in here. More and more people have to commute, more families have to have two people working jobs just to be able to afford their home and make a living here. So as you city councilman, in order to enhance our public safety, again, I'd like to establish the Public Safety Commission. We have done very well financially with our operating reserve and how we handle our budget. But I'd like to take that a step further and start protecting ourselves from the CalPERS program that the state of California has. We need to start aggressively paying down our liabilities so that we don't pass that unfunded issue on to our kids and our grandkids. And finally, as we've talked about many times, economic development has to come to Santa Clarita. We have great relationships with the EDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and VIA. We need to help bring in the infrastructure so that they can help sell the city, bring businesses here so we can spend less times on the road and more times at home with our family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Matthew Hargit?
There's so much I could say that pretty much everyone said the whole night, you know, so many great things about the city, so many things that we could fix. You know, thank you for having us all out here tonight. It's been a pleasure. I'm going to take my time to talk to you about Prop 11, and ask you all to take a minute to talk to everyone you know to vote no on Prop 11, a measure that's being used by ambulance companies to take away hard-working first responders' pay, meal breaks, and downtime. Under the guise of public safety, it is an absolute sham paid for by two companies pouring millions of dollars in to undercut first responders that already work hard for your communities. And that brings me around to something that really needs to be, we need to encourage good companies, hard-working companies that want to bring good-paying jobs to the citizens of our city. Keep people working here, bring new people in, keep this being a great city. Thank you for having us out tonight.
Thank you. Brett Haddock?
I will thank you again, KHTS, SCVTV, and the Signal for putting this on, and thank the three of you for asking us some phenomenal questions. My name is Brett Haddock. I'm a 34-year resident of Santa Clarita, and at 33 years old, that's been a challenge. My first apartment was very dark. But I've been here, been here my whole life. My grandparents moved here in the early '60s, where my grandfather got a job working construction. And the very concrete that they're tearing up along the 5 right now was concrete that he actually helped pour. Then he worked heavy machinery and helped build Castaic Lake Dam. They moved to Santa Clarita to raise their five children, and my parents stayed here to raise their four boys. And this is where I want to raise my family. This is a fantastic community. Anytime we see something, some tragedy happens, this community bands together like no other that I've ever seen. And we're all there for each other. My biggest fear is the just total lack of planning for the future that we currently have. I would hate to see a Montecito-level event happen here where we get a one-two punch of a massive brush fire followed by flooding. And I think we're very ill-prepared for that. As a software engineer, I like tackling big problems. I like solving issues. And the skill set doesn't necessarily apply across the board, but very much the problem-solving skills are very much there. My goal is to talk to as many people in Santa Clarita as I can, to try to be your voice, your representative, and listen to your concerns and what you want for the city. I don't want to have a street named after me. I'm not looking to sell some property cheap or to make some money off of property, and I'm not looking to, you know, do a cheap endorsement to make a quick buck. I'm here for you. Please, if I do my job correctly, I will be forgettable, and I'm okay with that. I want to do what's right for my city, and I hope that I can talk to you and earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Ken Dean?
I thank all of you for being here tonight. Shows dedication, concern, and interest in our city. As a founding father of the city, I had a vision of a city of the future. We live in a great city. It's not just one neighborhood, it's all neighborhoods. And just as symbolic, it's all areas. It's New Hall, it's Saugus, it's Valencia, and it's Canyon Country. And if the city can take an area like a 1940s downtown New Hall and transform it into an upscale community with trendy restaurants and stores, we can do the same thing in Canyon Country. Canyon Country from Sierra Highway to San Canyon, quite frankly, is a disgrace. It's a 1950s look. Today, it's a 1950s look that goes back to the 1950s. We need to address our roads. We need to address the synchronizing of lights. We need to address the congestion. And one of the things that causes congestion is the buses. We need to have bus turn-ins, which are a nightmare. It backs up traffic. We need more parks. I grew up in Chicago, and I remember growing up in Chicago, no matter where you lived, somewhere you had a park to go to. We need more parks out here. Parks don't have to be huge parks. They can just be something very small, a place where people can just go and sit, read the paper, relax. But we do need more parks. In conclusion, I'm going to offer you three things. I'm going to ask for three things from you. Give me your trust, your confidence, and your vote. I will give you honesty, integrity, and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Sean Weber?
You know, at the last, there was a vacant position for Dante Acosta, and he moved up to State Assembly, and they had a whole application process. And, you know, during that process, I had quite a bit of influence on social media. I grew up out here. I have lots of friends out here. And by doing so, it made me a target. And I want to read from the Court of Appeals tentative decision of what happened to my family. My family's house was singled out. My mother's car window was broken. We have it on video. And I don't want to get too far into that, but I want to read this. It says, "While Haddock may be allowed to publicly criticize Weber online, other evidence in the record shows a private harassing conduct directed at Weber and his family that justified the order." I have an active restraining order against this gentleman to my right. Not him, but the one over to my right. It's being upheld by the Court of Appeals currently. And Weber's petition contains several references of private communications.
We did ask that there be no personal.
This is not personal. This is what's going on. This is Court of Appeals decision. I'm reading from the record. If you guys don't want me to read it, fine. I'll be silenced. I'll be silenced.
That got awkward.
I want to thank SCV News, I want to thank KHTS, and I want to thank my great friends over at the Signal for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and to everybody watching at home. My name is Logan Smith, and I'm running for Santa Clarita City Council for three reasons. I'm running for Santa Clarita City Council because I believe in environmental justice. I'm running for Santa Clarita City Council because I believe in economic justice. And I'm running for Santa Clarita City Council because I believe in social justice. Santa Clarita as a city stands at a crossroads, and we have to make a decision about what sort of future we want for this city. It's time to elect public servants who know what public service means, and that's serving the public, which is why I don't accept a single penny from developers or other corporate interests in my campaign. I'm proud to say that I've been endorsed by a broad coalition of legislators from State Senator Kevin DeLeon to Assembly Speaker Pro Tim Kevin Mullen to Assembly Members Ash Calra, Laura Friedman, and Blanca Rubio. I'm proud to say I have the endorsement of County S.S.R. Jeff Prang, the Sierra Club, the National Union of Healthcare Workers, our brothers and sisters in labor, and more than a dozen statewide, national, and local organizations, as well as other local leaders right here in our community like Katie Hill and Kristy Smith. Santa Clarita needs leaders who will tackle our opioid epidemic with a bold, comprehensive vision because it's time to be proactive, not just reactive. Santa Clarita needs leaders who will tackle our homeless epidemic with solutions, not just for tomorrow, not just for next week, but for 10 years down the line. And Santa Clarita needs leaders who know how to bring the good mortgage-paying jobs of the future to this city so that we're a city as strong as we are now, not just five years from now, not just 10 years from now, but 30 years from now, so that our kids can grow up in the same great city we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine West.
Santa Clarita is a great place to live, and I love it. It's a great place to work, raise a family, we have great schools, and I'm running to continue to keep us a safe and precious quality of life. My highest priority is keeping us one of the safest cities in America. We now have almost 10,000 acres of open space, increasing open space, expanding our 85 miles of trails, and improving our 34 parks. So our life in Santa Clarita will keep getting better and better. We are considered one of the best places in the United States to live. Improving our traffic situation, expanding our new roads network is critical, like building Via Princessa across to Wiley. Improving transportation and creating options. Today, $47 million was approved to enhance the I-5 corridor and make it safer. Collaborating and partnering with, partnering with the county, state, and federal government is essential. We're building a new sheriff's station and a nine-acre Canyon Country Community Center. We're partnering on Saugus, on the senior center and building a Saugus library in the future. We're bringing the arts with the Lenley Theater next year, and the New Hall Family Theater is already in usage. The old main downtown New Hall has brought an abundance of arts. Assisting with our veterans and senior housing is critical and helping the homeless. We have purchased land for our new year-round senior center. Strong intervention programs for drug abuse, heroin kills, Defy SCV for schools, and the J Team at the Sheriff's Department with 100% graffiti removed within 24 hours. We're keeping our budget balanced with 20% reserves for emergencies. We're continuing our tenure plan for fully-funded employee pensions. Working with the Chamber of the EDC to bring and retain quality jobs in Santa Clarita is essential, and we are one of the best places to live anywhere. We are rich in history. We are truly beautiful, and I have been proud to serve you, and I would be honored to receive your vote so I can continue the legacy.
Thank you, Lorraine. Sandra Nichols.
Well, thank you, everyone, for inviting us today. It's been an honor to speak. My campaign is to speak for the people out there that feel like they're voiceless, the seniors, the homeless, young people. They don't know what to do. They're living here, maybe with their parents. I've talked to people where there's six couples in a house, maybe three bedrooms. That's part of the reason why there's so much traffic. People don't understand that, they don't even think about it. I've talked to homeless people. At the library, on the city bus that I take all the time, and they say, one, they think that bridged a home. One person told me it was a joke. He didn't like it. He thought the city should take it back. Another person told me they liked it. They just signed up. So there's always a difference of opinions. But one person that said to me, we need more, they need more things like the library, and I'm not talking about making more libraries, but where they can go and feel safe. That's why you see so many homeless in libraries during the day. They're up all night worrying, you know, they don't sleep because people will attack them, steal their stuff, et cetera. So therefore, they go to the library, they're safe, they're treated like everybody else. And they said that that is one of the things, they wish there were more places that they go during the day to feel safe. You're never going to eliminate all the homelessness because we have a lot of mental, a lot of drug problems, a lot of alcohol. But quite honestly, if it was only 315 that are homeless that bridged a home served, which is what they said, in this kind of population, I don't think it's so bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Bill Miranda.
35 years ago, I moved to Santa Clarita because it's great schools and wonderful family environment. It was a great place to raise a family, and by the way, it still is. Soon after I got here, I got involved in proposing the movement toward cityhood. I fought against the Elsmere Canyon Dump, and I got involved in a number of nonprofits in the community. My wife started a business 31 years ago. Her business is still going strong here in Santa Clarita. She's a small business owner, so we know about small businesses, and we know about creating jobs here in Santa Clarita. I'm a council member, but I'm also an Air Force veteran, former corporate executive, a small business owner, and I have worked constantly throughout my 35 years in the community with nonprofits, with people in need. That's what we do here in Santa Clarita. We don't come here to get elected, we don't come here to be famous, we come here to do work. We come here to volunteer. Santa Clarita is the biggest volunteering city that I've ever been in. And I have to tell you, I grew up in New York City and I've traveled throughout the world. This is the biggest volunteering city ever. I'm looking out at all of you here, and I am so proud. In my mind, I can say, I know almost everybody here. I have a personal relationship with almost everybody here. So someone said, I don't know who it was, and it doesn't matter, someone said that one of the adventures of running for city council is they get to meet some wonderful people. I've known a lot of you wonderful people for many years. I've been involved for many years in this community. And let me tell you something else. A lot of people are saying a lot of things they're going to do, and I'm saying to them, what are you going to do that we're not already doing?
Thank you, Bill. I promise not to skip Marsha McLean this time.
Oh, thank you very much. Well, I'm going to just mention a little bit about my background. I started my career working for the Los Angeles Police Department. I then went to work for a Los Angeles city councilman, and then I went to work for the federal government, and I was assigned to Tel Aviv, Israel, for two months, and then to Paris, France. Paris is where I met my husband Dale. When my tour was up and he was out of the Army, we decided to, we got married in New York and drove across country to California. I decided to become involved in my community. We moved to Canyon Country when we moved out here in 1973, so that has a very special place in my heart. And I became involved in PTA and such. The reason I mention this is because there's something to be said for experience. I am involved in regional boards, commissions, JPAs regarding getting the money that we need to build our roads. We need to build more roads, but nobody's going to give you the money. You have to know how to get it. I know the players, I know where the money is, and more importantly, they know me, so that when I come before them, they understand that, first of all, I mean business and I won't stop until I get what I want and set for our valley, and second of all, you know, what's necessary. So I belong also to the League of California Cities. Just recently, a resolution was passed because Sacramento, with some legislators, not all, but Sacramento is trying to confiscate our money constantly, and that can't happen. So I worked with them. There is a resolution in order to stop Sacramento from confiscating our monies. We are one of the most desirable cities to live in. We are growing, but when I am out and about, people tell me, we are still family-friendly, and that's what counts to me, and that's what I want to keep as family-friendly. You have a large ballot to get through. City council is at the end. Please make sure that you vote for city council. Please vote for Marsha McLean. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marsha. Diane Troutman.
Well, I'm running for a seat on city council because it's time for a new voice and new ideas in our leadership. The valley, as you've heard, is projected to double population according to our general plan. Whether or not we accept that, we are still going to grow, and that growth is going to exacerbate traffic congestion, lack of affordable housing, homelessness, threats to public safety, and uncertain water resources. To guarantee long-term success, we need fresh thinking, innovative solutions, increased collaboration, and greater government transparency, and those things have been missing. We can't approach problems in the same old ways and expect different results. We can't exclude people from the process and expect to develop a cohesive community, and we can't maintain our quality of life if we don't protect existing neighborhoods as we grow. Throughout my 12 years as a planning commissioner, I tried to address these problems, but my authority was limited. Even so, I approved new parks, recreational facilities, trails, roads, workforce, and affordable housing. I improved development projects through revisions that brought benefit to our community. I fought to protect existing neighborhoods from overdevelopment, both in the city and in the county areas. I worked to reduce traffic congestion and improve pedestrian and cyclist safety. I promoted the open space preservation and environmental protection, and I championed the growth of the arts and creation of the Arts Commission. I created and ran a small education business for 12 years, so I understand the challenge of small businesses, and I believe our city must do more to ensure the success of small businesses, even as we invite larger businesses in and we create green businesses and the job training that we'll need. I've been a nonprofit leader with various organizations for the 23 of the 25 years I've lived here. I'm currently working to prevent homelessness among senior women by collaborating to create a shared housing program, which we hope to expand. We can acknowledge the past achievements while also recognizing that it's time for change. I offer my knowledge and experience and commitment to engage the entire community.
Here, I started a DVD manufacturing plant in the industrial center when I was working for post-production. But after I had my kid, Max, everything in my life changed, and I started driving for Uber. And driving for Uber, I have a very real perspective of our community. I have almost 8, 8,500 rides, and my driver rating is a 4.96. There is, for millennials, there's a very big opportunity to create vocational education here. Nothing's below them, they're not entitled to anything, they can learn landscaping, post-production, cybersecurity. Those jobs can be created right here. There has to be a real nightlife here. Too many rides out of the valley, further away from your house, spending more money in cities and not locally. I've given too many rides to chemotherapy patients where there has to be a safe, reliable, convenient place for people to get medicine, medical marijuana here. If the entire country can legalize it, if our state is legal, there's no reason anyone should leave Santa Clarita to go get medicine. I also believe there are very big opportunities here to build an Olympic Training Center. I think there's a very big opportunity to create a transportation system. I gave a ride who, a guy who works for Hyperloop, and there's, there could be absolutely a Hyperloop built here. Your support, your vote is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Sen. Cop. I'd like to thank all the candidates. The 12 of you who remain did a nice job of following our rules. Appreciate that. Thank you, everybody. Our live audience, you'll notice there have been cameras all over the place. Not a thing escaped capture, and you will be able to see this video and watch it back on hometownstation.com, scvtv.com, and signalscv.com. I'd like to thank our media partners, KHTS and SCVTV, for joining us at the Signal. It's great for the three of us to get together and work, to work together and cooperate on something like this. And thank you all, and have a good night. We brought it in, almost on time.